No, we're just going to keep going. All right. As we know, Mr. Rocco resigned. We're required to, within 30 days, to appoint a new supervisor. Correct, Mr. Clark?
That is correct.
All right. So here we are tonight. I'm going to make a motion to appoint Erin Mullen to fill Mr. Rocco's term.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Before we vote, I'm going to open the meeting to public comment. Is there any public comment needed? Okay, no public comment. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I'm opposed. There's no for me.
Okay. What do we do now, Mr. Clark?
I believe Ms. Mullen is present.
She is?
I believe Judge Wizlosky is present.
She is.
So it would be appropriate for Ms. Mullen to come forward with Judge Wizlosky and be sworn in.
It's in our packet.
Would your husband want to hold the Bible?
There you go. Here you can have two microphones.
Oh, thank you. Why don't you hold that? Are you going to hold her Bible?
She asked me to.
Yeah.
That work?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Could you? I better hold this because you're going to have to raise your right hand. And put your left hand on the Bible. You don't have three hands. I and state your name.
I, Erin Mullen.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of supervisor.
To the office of supervisor.
For the township of Falls.
For the township of Falls.
County of Bucks.
County of Bucks.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chance.
Thank you.
That was very much.
Thank you.
I bought them.
All right. Dave, you ready in the back?
Ready.
All right. Item number two on our edge. Or, Mr. Clark, you want to comment on our executive session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Dents. And while I'm at it, the board also held an executive session on October 12th to discuss personnel matters. The board held an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss matters related to a collective bargaining agreement. And the board just held an executive session to review the agenda with the new supervisor, Ms. Mullen. No decisions were made, no deliberations took place. It was simply an opportunity to review the agenda with Ms. Mullen.
All right. Item number two, secretary treasurer appointment to fill Mr. Rocco's vacancy again. I make a motion to appoint Brian Galloway as our secretary treasurer.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
That takes us to item number three, public comment. Is there any public comment? Do we have a list? This is just for general public comment. We take public comment on the agenda items as well.[1046.72][1046.72][end of transcript] All right. The only name on the list is Joan Graves.
Hi, I just have a couple of quick questions. Relative to Exelon leaving Falls Township, and there were supposed to be several flares that were that had to be put on the landfill. I'd like to get an update on that. What's the status of the flares? And have they been? Has that been implemented yet? And now that Exelon's gone, what's going to happen with the methane gas if the flares have not been placed on the landfill?
No, not yet they haven't. But there's discussion of them, of someone moving in and rehabbing that whole facility and opening it up again.
Okay. So then they would process the methane and utilize it for electricity?
Correct.
For the 10,000 homes?
Yeah. That was the plan before the flares were just a temporary fix until they did something with that.
Okay. But there's no, there are no flares since 2019.
Not that I'm aware of.
No additional flares.
Correct.
So the methane is just going into the atmosphere at this point in time? The excess.
I honestly don't know. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Could you, could you find that out for me?
Sure. I'll go on the website for you.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Yep. Any other public comment needed? All right. Item number four, certificate of appropriateness, 335 Trenton Road. Replace roof with cedar wood shake. This is the Three Arches Building owned by Falls Township. It's a historical building, so we can't just throw any old roof up on there. This was reviewed and approved by the Harp Board. Any questions or comments for board members?
I have no questions.
Any public comment needed? All right, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion made in seconded. All in favor? Aye. All right. Item number five, minor subdivision, Falls Township Industrial LLC, 300 River Road. Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Dents, lady and gentlemen. Yes, I'm here for North Point Falls Township Industrial LLC. This is a minor subdivision, creating a lot, approximately 77 acres inside. I believe we have Greg Glitzer, the engineer, on Zoom. It is a rather straightforward application. In fact, the resolution approving the subdivision has been reviewed by my client. We've consented to all the conditions and comments as set forth in the proposed resolution. So if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to take them at this point.
All right. Any comments or questions for board members?
Yeah, is Mr. Jones on the, on the Zoom?
Do we have Joe Jones here? There he is.
Yes, Joe, are you okay with all the compliance?
Yes, I am, Mr. Palmer. The project was actually before the planning commission in June for both subdivision and land development. So we've seen this before. This simply is for the subdivision component. So yes, we're okay with it.
Thank you.
All right. Any public comment needed? Any other board members? Mr. Galloway?
No questions, thank you.
I think this is straightforward, just a basic subdivision.
That's it.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor?
Mr. Dents, you have a public comment?
I did.
Okay. Aye.
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 All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number six, Levittown Car Wash LLC, preliminary and final land development, 8601 New Falls Road. This is a crossing the Burger King on New Falls. It's already a car wash there. They proposed to have just a car wash, correct?
That's correct.
It was a gas station and a car wash.
Correct.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the board. Melanie Lacey, I'm with Claire Harrison, Harvey, and Bransberg. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Levittown Car Wash LLC. I'm accompanied by the project engineer, Kirsten Holmes, excuse me, Kirsten Holmes, as well as the representative for the owner LLC, Imran Malik. And as described, the site is currently a shell gas station located at 8601 New Falls Road. Tonight, we're seeking preliminary as well as final approval of the land development application. And the current site, it has gas pumps as well as a convenience store and a automated car wash at the rear. The applicant is proposing a removal of the gas pumps, expansion of the automated car wash into a self-serve car wash, as well as conversion of the convenience store into a employee office with no retail space. The project engineer would be happy to describe or walk through the variances and waivers that were granted by the zoning hearing board if necessary. And that sums up the application. We'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
All right. This has been reviewed by you, I assume, Mr. Jones. Do you have any comments to add? I mean, this is pretty straightforward as well. I was, I didn't realize it was a self-service car wash.
At the rear. It's a gap. It's an express car wash. It is an automated car wash.
Oh, it is an automated?
Yes.
The new one will be?
The new one will be.
As well as a self-serve or no?
No, no, just an automated car wash.
And then it'll just be an office building with it?
Correct.
All right. Mr. Jones?
No, Mr. Chairman, the project is pretty straightforward from a site development perspective. They're actually proposing less impervious surface than what was there before. And the only, you know, potential issue that came up during the planning commission was related to traffic and the stacking lane. But they comply with ordinance for those. And they have to obtain HOP permits from PennDOT for the driveway renovations. So we have no comment.
All right. And this has been reviewed by the traffic engineer, I assume. Mr. Jones, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. He had no questions. Any comments or questions for board members? Mr. Boraski?
No, my only, my only question and concern really seems like it's being handled was the, was there going to be the stacking and the traffic coming out of, more so back out, like onto Hood Boulevard there, so.
Yep. And it is a one-way circulation through the, through the property. So in New Falls Road, through the car wash, and exiting through Hood Boulevard exit.
And you can go left or right at that point.
We do have left turn restrictions posted. We heard the planning commission's concern. We are working with PennDOT, and we had a traffic assessment done. So based on that assessment, we do have afternoon peak hour restrictions for left turns out of Hood Boulevard.
Great.
Oh, perfect. So during school hours, you can't turn left.
Correct.
Yeah.
And actually, too, the peak hours of the operation are very different from the normal business peak hours. They're really lunch hour, business peak. So it offsets from the general morning and afternoon hours.
Okay. Mr. Palmer, any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. First, I'm excited about the renovation there. That was long overdue. It wasn't eyesore, and bringing in new business, we're excited about that. Pensbury has a crossing guard that's assigned to that location in morning and afternoon, and they park on that property. Are you guys able to make accommodations for the crossing guard that operates that intersection there?
Yeah, that's my question.
You have no problem with that? Okay. That's it. As far as the traffic, that was my other concern. And, you know, Mr. Jones is okay with it, so I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Galloway?
No, I'm just happy to see something positive being done with the property. Thank you.
And Ms. Mullen?
No comments.
All right. Is there any public comment needed? I see no hands for public comment. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right.
Good luck.
Thank you. Good luck. Item number seven, B&amp;J Warehouse Sketch Plan Presentation, 1001 New Ford Mill Road.
Kim Fremeth here on behalf of the applicant, which is Ucal Inc. They are the owner of the property located at 1001 New Ford Mill Road. The property is zoned HI-heavy industrial. It's currently operated by B&amp;J Group, which is an industrial warehousing and distribution facility. The existing building is approximately 178,000 square feet, and the applicant is proposing three separate additions to the building, which I will have Mr. Kiefer, who's with me tonight from Showalter, an associate, the engineer for the project, go over with you. There are three additions off of three portions of the building, one of which will have a
Sorry.
No problem. One of which will have a green roof in order to accommodate the additional impervious surface. Obviously, we'd have to go to the zoning hearing board for a variance with respect to the increase in impervious surface. So we're here tonight to obtain some feedback from you before we go ahead and take that next step. We did meet with the planning commission a couple of weeks ago. They did not express any concerns to us. They appeared to be supportive of the project. We do have a letter from Mr. Jones, as well as the Bucks County Planning Commission, which we will comply with. I know one of the items in Mr. Jones's letter requested information as to whether there would be any explosives at the site. There will not be any explosives at the site. There are hazardous materials stored at the site in compliance with code. We know we would have to meet with fire marshal and address any concerns he would have. We'd certainly be willing to do that. But with that brief introduction, I'll just have Mr. Kiefer go over the plan with you briefly. I think you all have it with you. But Wayne, would you like to just provide a quick overview?
Does the sketch plan on the television?
I don't see it, no.
Do you have it? Can we put it up to the people that are sitting down?
Where's the best place to locate it?
Yeah, that looks like it's a
You can aim it that way.
Yeah, we have it, just for the audience to see it.
Sorry.
That's all right. Don't be sorry.
After that, there's three separate additions, two on this corner and one on this side. Part of the internal reuse of the building is they separate flammable and non-flammable materials. So the additions on the two sides allow them to keep those materials separated. Stormwater will be handled by a green roof on this addition and an infiltration basin in the rear. No new sanitary facilities are proposed with it, so no increase in water usage or sanitary. No new sanitary facilities are proposed with it, so no increase in water usage or sanitary flow. As mentioned, we'll be requesting a variance for an increase in impervious surface. We'll also wind up requesting three waivers, one for the 100-foot wetlands margin, one for a traffic study and one for street trees.
Sorry.
Your ordinance requires a traffic study for any building area over 50,000. Our three additions total 56,000, but there'll be no changes to the entrance and exit and very little change to the traffic. This is simply warehousing. The street tree waiver is due to a PICO easement that runs along the entire frontage of the property. All right, happy to answer any questions.
And how long have you been operating down there?
I want to say I think this has been going on, you might remember as long as I did, but at least maybe eight years.
I was gonna say 2008.
I was here when they first joined and I can't remember how long ago, but the
Our job number is 2008 job number, so that's probably about what we started with. But it had been in operation for many years before that. It's American Can, I believe?
It was American Can, National Can until it was purchased by
B&amp;J.
All right, and this isn't part of North Point's property, obviously. So this is, for those that don't know, this is down inside the old US Steel site. Obviously, it's been there for a while. Everybody, can you point to the additions again so that people on TV can see it again?
Okay.
You have two in the back.
New Ford Mill Road is here. The two additions are along this edge of the building and part of the back corner and then along the other side of the building.
Right, and the one by itself in the front has a green roof to make up for the impervious
On the side, yes, this area. There's wetlands through here, so the green roof will contribute directly to the wetlands.
All right, pretty straightforward. Any questions from board members? We're not voting on this tonight, this is just a sketch plan. Any other questions for anyone?
No, I have nothing, good luck.
No, no questions.
Ryan, you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Any public comment needed?
I have a couple.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Would you guys have a problem with the waiver with the street trees being donated to our shade tree commission?
I don't see that as an issue.
Okay, great. We're getting a lot of industrial building going on back there and every single building is coming in and they're bringing in warehouse employees and are you looking to bring in more associates?
There's gonna be no significant change in the number of employees. The additions are strictly warehousing, so they can keep more material on site.
And what kind of hazardous materials do you guys house in there?
There's a variety of flammable and non-flammable materials. I couldn't tell you the specific details as to it, but I know that we submitted material to data sheets and gone through significant back and forth with the Fire Marshal when B&amp;J
I'm sorry. I can redo that. I don't know the specifics, but there are flammable and non-flammable materials being stored in there. When B&amp;J first entered into the building and came in for a certificate of occupancy, I know we went through some significant back and forth with the Fire Marshal to make sure that everything would be up to code and safe. So certainly, we'd be open to doing that again. The Fire Marshal may actually have more information as to the specifics of what's being stored in there, but I do not have those specifics. It's, they're chemicals.
Has it been any violations since you guys?
I'm not aware of any.
None to speak of, nothing different than any other place for a manual.
Okay. And explain to us what is a green roof, so the people at home understand. And are you guys getting credits from the government for going green?
No, it's just to meet the ordinance requirements as well as the conservation district requirements. Essentially, it is what it sounds like. There's a thin layer of soil on top of the roof. There'll be plantings on top of that. The soil and plantings will help to basically suck up the rainfall onto that part of the roof, so it's not discharged. Then it'll be filtered through a drainage layer and then discharged into the wetlands as cleaner runoff.
Thank you, that's all, thank you.
Any, Mr. Galloway, are you good? I already asked you.
I am good.
Any public comment needed? Okay, and that's it then, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any idea when you'll be coming back?
I would assume we're gonna be full steam ahead filing with the zoning hearing board and once we get through that, hopefully early 2022, we'll be back.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Item number eight, consider finalizing the award bid for the historical three arches roof replacement. So we approved the certificate of appropriateness. This went out the bid, we're now going to pay to have the new roof put on three arches. Mr. Tequita, is this yours?
The 30-day responsible contractor review period for the historical three arches roof replacement will be completed before the next Board of Supervisors meeting. In order to continue the process, the Board has requested to consider allowing the township manager to finalize the award for the historical three arches roof replacement contingent upon a successful outcome of the responsible contractors review.
All right, any questions for Mr. Tequita? Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Galloway?
No.
Any public comment needed on that? All right, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, item number nine, consider proposal from Jones Engineering Associates for the removal and replacement of the Rice Drive culvert. On Rice Drive, over, if you're coming from Mayfield Road heading out towards, I guess towards Stony Hill it would be, the culvert washed out on the creek. It's been washed out for several months now. You want to take us through this, Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The proposal we're here for you is for the design of replacement, construction administration oversight and the bid process. So essentially, we have to come up with a solution to replace that failing culvert, which by the way is just aged infrastructure. It's composed of corrugated metal pipe that's kind of rotted on the bottom and I guess due to the recent storms, it's washed out and a pretty significant sinkhole. And so it was identified by Public Works. We responded pretty quickly with the proposal because we certainly don't want to leave that condition any longer than we have to. So this proposal is for us to do the design, bid administration and construction oversight for the project. There's some moving parts on this and some unknowns. We know that there's a pretty large storm sewer pipe that connects into that culvert system underground from the previous road program. So if we expose it, it's gonna take a little bit of an effort from us to identify the proper solution, considering that pipe and weigh that against the permitting requirements to try to come up with the most feasible, most effective and the most time-effective solution. So we anticipate a fair amount of H&amp;H work, that's hydrologic and hydraulic study, as well as a pretty big permitting effort on an effort to get this out the bid as soon as possible.
All right, and what do you, how long do you anticipate this taking?
The construction or the design or both?
Both.
We'd like to go out to bid, I would say, in the springtime. We have to be careful because we don't want to go out to bid before the permits are issued. So there's some moving parts to this. But ideally, the project will be under construction by early summer when the stream is at its lightest. You know, certainly don't want to go out when it's swollen and when, you know, the April rains come because it'll be just too difficult to divert the stream. So if we're targeting early summer, I'd say June or July to be under construction.
Okay, and I guess that road's gonna be closed for a while?
That road will be closed and detoured under the, for the entire time of the construction, which we're anticipating three months.
Okay. So it'll probably take five months. All right, any questions for Mr. Jones, Mr. Boraski? Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Galloway?
No, thank you.
Ms. Mullin?
No, thank you.
Yeah, this is just one of those things that unfortunately washed out and we have to fix. Any public comment needed? No, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Galloway, can you poll the board, please?
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Dentz?
Yes.
And I am yes.
Thank you, Mr. Galloway. This is his first voice vote, everyone. His first roll call vote, nice job.
I was nervous.
Item number 10, we're going to table. This considers sanitary sewer maintenance agreement between GSP Management and Falls Township. This is with, you want to explain this, Mr. Ms. Galloway? I'm sorry. I almost said, Mr. Tequita.
Sure, this is an agreement that we've been working with the property owner for one of the mobile home communities in the township. They are providing public sanitary sewer and so this agreement is required by DEP. We did meet with TOFA last week to discuss this and they had indicated that they're still working with a developer. So they'll be working with them over the next few weeks and so we should be able to get this in front of the board next month.
All right, thank you very much. So is there a motion to table? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Item number, item number 11, consider authorization to advertise an ordinance amending Chapter 169, pawnbrokers and dealers in precious metals and secondhand goods. This has to do with pawn shops and scrap yards. We have an ordinance in place that if, you know, this started a few years ago. It was an idea I had when I was working in Burlington, New Jersey, where they require every pawn shop to hold items for several days. Actually, they actually put their photos of the items online, so if your stuff was stolen, you have a chance to get it back. I don't think there's any pawn shops left in Falls Township. Chief Whitney, do you know, no?
Left on West Trent Avenue.
Yeah, that's what he said too. But we also, we do have several scrap yards and right now, there's a lot of crime with people stealing catalytic converters. I'm sure you read about it in the paper. It's a very expensive repair for your car if yours gets stolen and apparently there's precious metal in there, so they have quite a bit of value. I remember I called Chief Whitney a couple of months ago when I heard a New Jersey scrapyard actually advertising on TV that they accept catalytic converters, which was bizarre. So this is pretty straightforward. Is there anything I missed, Ms. Gallagher?
No, we're essentially just updating a couple of the definitions. We relied on the US Treasury's definition of precious metal rather than the former definition and we just updated the definition of precious metal dealer.
All right, any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Boraski?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mrs. Mullin?
No questions.
All right, now I have none. Is there any public comment needed on this? All right, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Item number 12, consider resolution for the Bucks County 2021 Hazardous, Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Mr. Dipolito is here to take us through this one.
This amendment, or this hazard mitigation plan was put together by the county. They did send surveys to the municipalities for input on different types of flooding, hurricanes, things of that nature. They asked for input before they put this plan together. This was put together by the county and we're just adopting in their final form.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Boraski? Mr. Palmer?
No.
Ms. Mullin?
No.
Mr. Galloway?
No.
All right, and this is done by Resolution 2021-34. Is there a motion?
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. All right. This is you again, Mr. Dipolito. Consider ratifying agreement with Capital Health System to provide emergency medical ambulance services to portions of Falls Township. I guess they took over a couple of years ago, right, for Morrisville Ambulance Company?
That's correct. Capital Health took over for Morrisville Squad 139. They've been the primary coverage ambulance for that area since then. Their agreement has expired. They're looking for an amendment to the agreement to continue providing service in that area of Morrisville and Falls Township.
All right, it's just pretty straightforward. Any questions?
Is it just a single year amendment or multi-year?
We're working on a multi-year. So it just automatically, I'm sorry?
What we're looking for right now?
There's a 60-day, correct, Lauren? 60-day agreement to get us by so we can work on the year and it'll automatically renew if there's no problems.
How's that going, are we close?
We're waiting for a draft of the agreement from Capital Health, but they did indicate that they'd have it to us in the next couple of weeks.
Have there been any issues with them since they took over?
None.
Any questions, Mr. Palmer?
I do. Does this have any bearing on basic charges for basic life support, advanced life support? Do we have any say, like cable advisory board has, you know, a little input on it? Or is it just, we agree to them doing it?
We don't, we don't set any fees for any of the squads that provide service in Falls. Whatever they charge, they charge, that's, so they'd be no different than the other squads that provide service.
But they're for profit or they're nonprofit?
I don't know that answer.
Yeah, they're for profit.
I believe they're for profit, but I didn't want to, you know, say for sure.
Sure, okay, that's fine, okay. Mr. Galloway?
I have no questions, thank you.
Did I ask any, Mrs. Mullin?
I don't have any.
All right, is there any public comment needed? None, is there a motion to approve this resolution? Or this is not a resolution, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So seconded, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right, item 14, consider adopting ordinance Chapter 206, records in its entirety. I know there's a few of them here tonight that have a lot of questions about this. So Ms. Gallagher, will you take us through this one?
Certainly, Mr. Dentz. This is a comprehensive rewrite of the township's towing ordinance. Essentially, what this will do is rewrite the entire section so that it will authorize the board to go out to an RFP for towing services for the year, which is the next item on this evening's agenda. It'll allow the board to select a heavy-duty tower and a backup and a light-duty tower and a backup rather than the current system that we have, which is an unlimited number of companies that can come in and apply.
Okay, so to make the long story short, in the past, we've had a duty tow list as long as I've been here, at least 12 years, except for one year. With a rotating list, we're going to change to one tower. I know there was some confusion in the, what you sent out, what we sent out. I mean, because it was a blanket ordinance, I guess, we wrote that we didn't write. It did say it was gonna be one person doing medium and heavy tow. That's not what we're gonna do. We're gonna have one person doing regular tow and a backup, one person doing heavy tow and a backup on the list, correct?
Right, so the ordinance allows the township to go a couple of different ways and the RFP does give the township some discretion when the proposals do come in to select from there.
Okay, anything else in there that I did, that I missed?
No, we did keep a lot of the provisions that are in the current ordinance regarding requiring insurance and indemnifying the township, things like that. But it is a comprehensive rewrite.
Okay, and what's the difference between this and the RFP that we're about to do next?
I'm sorry?
The RFP on the towing services?
Yes, so that is, that's done in conjunction with the ordinance and it will, once it's authorized this evening, then we will send it out to the existing duty towers. We'll advertise it, we'll post it on the township website and I believe the response date is November the 19th for any company interested to submit to the, to respond to the RFP. There is one portion of our ordinance, one of the updates that we made is to require a master towing license, which is issued by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I'm not sure what the timeframe is for that to be issued by the state, so if the board doesn't mind, we could include in the RFP that they would just have to obtain that license sometime during the 22 calendar year.
Is that something standard?
It is standard in other municipalities, yes.
Okay, any questions from board members? Mr. Boraski?
Can you, can you define the duties of a, of a backup or when that would be used?
Certainly, so if there is some sort of catastrophic accident that requires multiple vehicles and they simply run out of vehicles and need backup or for some reason they're not available and we were required to call a backup on the other side of the township, that would really be a police decision as to whether or not additional services were needed.
And would the backup have to match the prices of the primary tower?
So the RFP is gonna be written such that they're gonna have to propose their prices, so we could select based on whatever prices are in the RFP. Along with the other qualifications, of course.
Mr. Galloway, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I have a question for Chief Whitney. Logistically, for your officers, when they're, when they're out in the field, Logistically, for your officers, when they're, when they're out in the field, does it take a lot of time for them to go through the list, the way it's set up?
They don't go through the list.
Well, I mean, tell, tell us how, if somebody's in an accident, how does it work and with your leadership?
So how it works for an officer in the field when they're at a crash scene is they'll request a tow truck and the county radio will actually make the call to the tow company to dispatch a tow truck to the scene. So are officers really just use the radio and communicate with county dispatch?
Okay, I, I know we brought this up earlier. How's it been a headache with this process that we had to why we're going to the new process? They said it was logistically time consuming and also I think we had some concerns about billing practices with different towing outfits?
Ms. Gallagher can tell you that.
So the ordinance as it currently stands does require compliance with the township's fee schedule. The fee schedule will be in front of the board next month for repeal because we are going to open it up to allow tow truck companies to propose their own fees. And if that fee schedule was violated, then it would generate, it would trigger a hearing in front of the township manager to find out whether or not the ordinance was violated. That's just one of a number of different violations that could have been brought in front of the board. So we have had several hearings over the years regarding various violations, the fee schedule being the primary one.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mrs. Mullin?
No.
All right, is there any?
I got another question.
Go ahead.
And how long is the, would this be good for now?
So the way that ordinance and the RFP will be set up, it is for at least one year with the board's option to go to three years if they'd like.
Okay.
But the ordinance, once you adopt the ordinance, the ordinance is in place, it's the RFP that will be the one to three year.
Correct.
That you can pick, but the ordinance will remain in place until either amended or repealed at some later date.
All right, any, is that it? Any other board members? Public comment?
Okay.
You can come up to the mic.
Okay, my name's Joseph Warner, I'm from Emily Towing. I'm currently on the list. So my question was, you had mentioned there was going to be a tow license that was going to take effect. Was that rec masters that you had mentioned?
I believe it's a master tow license, I'm not an expert on that.
Because I'm not really sure that, I read in your, the paper that went out and it stated that there was, rec masters was going to be required and it was like one through five for light duty and then five through eight or something for heavy duty?
Um, that, that, sure, yeah.
What is rec masters?
Rec masters is actually a school that trains tow companies. It's something that you buy. It's not required by the, by the state. It's, if you want to brush up on your skills, you can take a rec master course. Or if you've been doing this for a long time, as I have been, or many of the guys that have been on the board or on the towing, you know, they, uh...
Yeah, I got you. This is, we discussed this, that we might not have to require that, correct?
Well, I think the idea is that the board will put in the RFP that the successful company will have through 2022 to obtain these certifications. If at some point the board determines that this might not be necessary, the ordinance can be amended sometime during 2022. I would not recommend making that amendment tonight because that, if you make that amendment tonight, that would be considered a substantial change that would require re-advertising. So if we want to deal with this, we can deal with it down the road, but I would not recommend making that change this evening.
And who issues this license? Is this something from the state?
It's not a license, it's a certificate.
From the state?
No, it's from rec masters or like an individual company, yes.
Just a money grab, okay.
Right.
All right.
My second...
So it's not something we have to require?
Right.
Is that it?
Uh, yeah, there's a few other ones too. When you're going to choose the tow company, who's going to be on, are they going to go by, you know, the policeman that we work with out in the field? Are they going to also like do a recommendation or is it just going to be by who's qualified by having everything in place, you know, tow yard, insurance, trucks, whatnot?
It's going to be a decision of the board of supervisors.
Okay. But you know what I'm, I'm getting at, right?
You asked a question and it's going to be a decision of the board of supervisors. And as with all decisions, they take into consideration.
Got it.
The advice of their professionals and their staff.
Excellent, okay, that's all, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi guys.
Good.
I'm John Jr. from John's Auto Body and Service. I've been up to these meetings too many times. Seems like we're always kind of, I guess, I wouldn't say fighting, but for our jobs. I've been doing this towing for as long as I've been a kid and doing it down there. Couple of years ago, went through this whole process when something happened with paperwork and it went down to one tower there and fought and all this. Two years ago, I bought a property to be put back on Falls, went through that whole thing to be put back on. So I spent a lot of money to invest in all this. That's, whatever, that's probably my problem when it all comes to it, but my question is, you're talking about backups, so you're going to award one person to tow. And then let's just say I'm the lucky guy that gets backup. Why would I keep a guy, you, you, that's when you're going to run into problems. Who's going to pay a full-time guy just to be a backup hoping for a call? You're going to run into problems with that. I don't know. So that's just one thing to kind of consider. The other thing, I, I do believe it was this, I know the board changes, but when I was up here at one of the meetings before, when they were trying to cap the towers, I tow for Bristol Township. If I've been to one meeting for Bristol Township, so I don't know what they do to properly render their towing, then maybe you guys should look into that, but I've been to one meeting. There's been five of the same towers that have been on it as long as I've ever been there.
Our problem here, to be honest, and I'm not talking about you, anyone specifically, is...
I think you have a couple towers that you have an issue with.
We have a lot of towers we have issues with and you guys rat on each other, not you, but I'm saying the towers are ratting on that tower. It takes up, wastes our cops' time, it wastes our legal fees and legal time, and we're not in the tow business, we're not providing a service here.
And I understand that.
This is a necessary evil for us that we have to do with the...
But I don't understand how it would, it, you should penalize everybody for doing it.
We're not penalizing anybody, we're just making it easier for the township.
So I just spent $300,000 on a property to get put back on three years ago, how's that not going to penalize it?
Listen, I didn't, we're not in the tow business.
I, I know you're not.
I mean, by us getting one tow...
So you're not in the tow business, but you guys are all going to make an educated decision?
Yeah, we're going to have one tower. When it happened five years ago, everything went smooth as butter. Chief Whitney, or Mr. Ward, Lieutenant Ward.
So what was five years ago?
I don't know, we had one tower and we didn't have a single problem all year. We didn't have any legal fees, we didn't have any problems calling a tower.
All right, and then the other thing I was told, and I believe it was, I, I'm sorry, I forget the names, but when we were trying to do a cap on the towing...
That's long before I was here, that had to be over 12 years ago.
It wasn't, but I, I know it wasn't you, and the board changes, but I believe it was these two. Told us as long as you have everything in the ordinance, you can't stop anybody from applying. So this ordinance, if say four of us all have what's required, what, why did that change? And who changed it?
Because we're getting rid of the duty tow. The duty tow is what we couldn't cap, having the rotating list. We're getting rid of that list and having one tower. That's the difference.
Yeah, I don't know, it just, if, if you have a problem with, you have guidelines that if you had, you got in trouble or you didn't do something right, you were supposed to be penalized. I, I don't have the old ordinance with me, but you got fined after the first one, I think at the second, at the third one, I do believe you're supposed to be suspended. Has that been happening? Like, did anybody get suspended?
I don't know. I know I've been here 12 years and this has been a headache since the first day I got on this board.
I do my tow and when I'm not on tow, I don't...
I'm not accusing you, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying, I don't even know who isn't, isn't the problem, I just know it's been an ongoing problem. I see the legal bills...
Has anybody been suspended?
Has anybody been suspended this year?
Not this year, we have suspended in the past, people have been fined in the past.
Well, we have had problems this year, yeah, it's, it's just ongoing, all the time. It's just a waste of our time and money.
Why wouldn't you just get rid of the people that give you problems?
Because we can't. We have no justification to just get rid of them just because we don't like them.
On the ordinance, it says after the, the third time you get suspended, but you're saying you didn't suspend anybody, that's what I, I don't understand.
Right, but then when the following year comes up and they apply and they meet all the requirements...
Then why wouldn't you just change the, for that?
It's just the direction the board decided to go.
Yeah, and then on the other thing, you're talking about if there's a problem, the radio room is the one who handles everything. That's who handles the list.
Yeah, that's what you said.
So it's not the, the police calling or anything like that?
Understood.
I don't know, I think you should just take in consideration of the towers that have been doing it for years and are in the business and have been putting money into it.
I understand what you're saying, I hear you, but we're not in the tow business.
If you hear me, then you should do your job.
It's, I am doing my job, that's exactly what we're doing it. Why should the residents of Falls Township have to foot the bill dealing with this nonsense?
Then somebody should have...
And paying the salaries of the cops that have to deal with it, every time there's a complaint.
They don't have to deal with it, they're...
They do, they absolutely do.
But if they didn't do their job, then somebody should have did their job and suspended them, because that's what the ordinance says.
We haven't had anyone said three violations this year, yeah, in a row.
Well, they can't be that bad.
It's bad enough that it's a headache and costing us money. Why should it cost us money? We're not in the tow business, I've said this, I keep saying the same thing. I've said this for years.
You can't say you don't have problems, you, you, there's different people that come up here with complaints all the time. You can't change everything, everybody's going to...
About towing?
Anything, any, anything that comes in here, that's why you have the meeting. There's always going to be little complaints about something.
You're right, but the towing isn't a service that we're providing for the township.
But you just said nobody got suspended, it's only three times it gets suspended, not one person.
How many instances have we had this year, Chief Whitney? Do you have any idea of complaints brought to us? Several, at least more than three, right?
That's a three or four, five.
Yeah, four or five, yeah, when you have to pay legal fees, hadn't you know how much they charge an hour?
Yeah, I know.
And we have to pay our cops, our cops now aren't out on the street, we don't have to deal with this stuff.
All right, I just, I think you should look into it, I just don't think, I think what you're doing is not the right decision. I think you should keep the towers that are good, like I said, Bristol Township, we've been to five, same five for as long as I've been there. There's no complaints, nobody complains about any...
I don't know how that's possible, you just don't complain about each other, because that's all he's doing in Falls Township, is complaining and ratting on each other.
You're putting us in a category, I, I'm not in that category.
I didn't say you, I said...
You said you all.
You know what I'm saying, I'm not saying you specifically.
I'm not staying up here for the other towers, I'm staying up here for me.
But we can't pick in shoes, that's the problem.
Yes, you can.
We can't, we can't tell the guy that's a rat that does the most ratting, we can't say you're not on our list anymore. So he's the one costing us all the money.
File your ordinance and suspend them.
He, we, he didn't do anything, he's just a rat.
Well, that, that's not right, you're complaining about the towing, but now you're calling him a rat, so you're getting rid of him because you don't like...
Because you're complaining about each other, it's not even the people that you're towing that are complaining, yous are complaining about each other, the towers are, not you obviously.
Okay, then whoever that is, maybe you should do it with them, that's what I'm saying. You just said he didn't do nothing wrong, but because he's a rat, you're getting rid of him.
We can, we would. How many times have we addressed it? Whenever there's a complaint, we have to address it, right? We don't just ignore it.
Three times, get suspended.
We don't put him in the bottom of a pile.
Am I wrong on that?
How many, how much money has it cost us this year, do you think? We have no idea, right?
I don't know.
Any, one instance is too much to have to deal with, we shouldn't have to deal with it.
You're right, I agree with you.
That's why we're doing this.
I'm telling you.
Yeah, but you know, you know what, a lot, a lot of the people didn't even come forward, it's just the, the residents...
What, for this?
The people that were...
Oh, because we just got the letter to...
No, 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 not, not the tow, not the tow, I'm talking about the, the people that have accidents, the people that are actually involved. We don't know how many of them are victimized by, but they're out there. We just were able to capture some and we talked about the, the legal bills and we talked about the police involved, they're, they're actually going through, pass bills and digging up and, you know, maybe not the officers on the street, but administrations doing it. So it, it, it's costing the taxpayers money, so, you know, I think they just want to go in a new direction and to simplify it.
That's exactly right.
And that's fine, but maybe look at the guys who did the towing and not the guys that did it wrong to jeopardize the other people. That's all I'm asking for. It really shouldn't be that hard, if you know who the rat is, then do what you're going to do, suspend him and it's done and over with.
We can.
But so you'll get rid of...
There's nothing in the ordinance that prevents him from doing that.
It does, after three times you get suspended.
No, that's not the rat, the rat is the one that's complaining about the people that are doing it. Half our complaints come from other towers, you're clear on that, right?
100%, I agree, I don't know why people are like that. Like I said, I do my towing and I'm, when I'm at all...
Understood, I'm not targeting any specific person.
Well, what I'm saying, let's just say the rat complains about this tower over here. That means you have documentation that that tower did wrong.
Yeah.
Right? After three times, that tower's suspended, so who cares about the rat?
One time is more headache than we should have to deal with. We're not in the towing business, I understand that this is...
I know you're not in the towing business.
Yeah.
We, we understand that, I am.
I understand.
So now you're jeopardizing what I do, so I think I have a right to fight for it.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
You said your piece.
So I think you should take consideration on that.
Okay.
You know, look at the towers that do right, not the towers that do wrong.
But we, we would have that information when we do our analysis at the end to when we ask, like the gentleman back there said, we, we will reach out to our, our, our guys in the field, our leadership over there, we'll come up with a...
Yeah, because I've had the same tower doing my, like, doing for Falls Township, I don't think we have any problem. And, I mean, I hate to say, but if it comes like that, then eventually I'm going to have to cut people. I mean, that's not really fair to the other people that's been doing it right for the last two, three years.
I hear you.
Do the officers know which tow companies are on time, who do the proper cleanups? Who do everything right?
Sir, please don't yell out the back.
You have to come up to the microphone. You gotta come up to the microphone.
Yeah, I'm not here to argue with anybody at all whatsoever. I'm just saying that the police department are the ones that are out there with us. In the rain, in the snow, or when it's hot out, or whatever. They know which person's on time. They know who's not. They know who does the proper cleanups. They know who does everything properly and who doesn't. And about the rats, the rats are gonna be the rats. What, what, what can you do? I mean-
The police are the ones that think this is a great idea, cause they said that when we had one tower, they didn't have any problems. They don't have to chase anybody. They don't have to worry about cleanup. They don't have to do anything. Because they only have one throat to choke, so to speak.
Right.
Lieutenant Ward's here. He can tell you. I mean, he's been dealing with it longer than anybody.
Right. And, and I agree.
Okay. So we're, we all agree. Okay. So, what are we doing now, item number fourteen? We're adopting?
The, the first thing you, you need to do is finish public comment and then-
Is that it for public comment?
And then you would be, it'd be a motion to adopt ordinance, uh, chapter two oh six records in its entirety.
You gotta use the microphone. Sorry.
You need to vote on adopting ordinance, chapter two oh six records in its entirety. It has been properly advertised and it is ready for adoption this evening.
Alright.
And I believe the ordinance number is twenty twenty-one three?
Thirteen.
Is there a motion?
Can I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
So we adopt, if we remove the ordinance and change the ordinance, um, and then what happens if the RFP goes bad?
If the RFP goes bad, meaning if we- Pressing the microphone. Um, you mean if we go out for RFP and we don't like the responses?
Absolutely.
Um, we would have several options available to us at that point in time. Um, not the least of which would be to just to select a tow or why we go out for RFP again. If we're not ready to award in December and we need to redo it again, um, we can, we would be at- Beginning in January, we'd have the opportunity to select a tow while we're waiting, um, to go through the RFP process again.
Can I say one more thing, please?
You gotta come up.
Yeah, I know, um, I don't think all you guys read this, but this new ordinance, just so you know. I think only one tower will meet this.
No, we're, the new ordinance, as it's written, requires one tower doing everything. And we're not doing that. We're not-
I understand that. This ordinance-
Yeah.
Have you read it?
Yeah.
For light duty?
Yeah.
Do you know what type of truck it tells you you have to have?
I don't know if there's between one and the other.
So the light duty truck you have to have is three thousand pounds and it's gotta have a twenty ton lift.
Does that sound right, Mrs. Gallagher?
Can you explain that?
It's, the light duty, according to the ordinance, ha- has to be a heavy duty truck. So, if you read this-
So regular rollback, regular-
If you read this right now, there's probably only one company right now that will get, that can do this without somebody investing money. Into getting a truck. So basically, this is telling me, if you read this, you already have your guy.
No, that's not true. That's not true.
I'm telling you.
Can you, can you explain what would be equivalent to a light? Like if I think a light duty, I think a regular rollback tow truck. So what would be requirements on that? I'm not worried about what the ordinance says. I'm worried, I'm asking your personal opinion or your personal, like, your own knowledge.
You're gonna need a heavy duty truck.
No, no. What is a regular rollback truck like?
Yeah, I wanna know what a regular rollback is.
Well, the flatbed is, when you, you know, when you pull up and you can pull the bed-
I know what the truck is. I wanna know what the weight is on it. I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to help you out.
We're gonna change the ordinance so it says what-
Rick, you understand what I'm trying to say?
Hold on. You gotta use the mic, Rick.
You got a regular, uh, regular rollback, said nineteen five. I'm sorry. I'm Richard Hackett from Hackett Tow and Recovery. Um, a regular flatbed's gonna be nineteen five GBW, twenty-six, twenty-six thousand GBW. What they're proposing in this ordinance is that we have a fifty ton wrecker. Um, fifty ton wrecker's a half million dollar truck. There's nobody but Rob's in this outfit that's got a fifty ton.
I have it.
I don't think Joe, Joe, you don't have a fifty, do you?
Thank you.
You have a thirty, right?
Yeah, we're not, that's not correct.
Nineteen thousand.
No, I mean, that's not correct. We're gonna change it.
The, the ordinance reads the contractor shall have one twenty ton wrecker.
Correct. Chassis gross vehicle weight of thirty-three thousand pounds. Additionally, the contractor shall have one, available one thirty ton wrecker with a chassis gross vehicle weight of fifty thousand pounds.
So your, your, your fifty thousand pound, thirty thousand pound wrecker is what Rob's-
Well, that's the heavy duty wrecker. We're not, it's gonna be separate.
That's not what this ordinance states.
I know, but we already addressed that. That's, the RFP's gonna read different. We're gonna change the ordinance so that we have two different requirements. A regular wrecker and a heavy wrecker.
Okay.
So the requirement for the smaller one is correct?
No.
The smaller one would be the nine five five.
It's grouped up all into the same category. They didn't separate it. And what, what, what they, we just got this today. I, I don't know about everybody else, but I got my-
Well, I don't know, I didn't know that difference.
I got my letter at nine o'clock this morning. So this is the first we're looking at it. Um, so it's all grouped together.
Guys, if you're seriously, you guys can email Matt. Cause like, I don't know the tow trucks, but I'm thinking, when I think light duty, I don't know the weights. When I think light duty tow, I think of-
Yeah, regular five fifty and a half, something along those lines, right.
Yeah, and F four fifty with a, with a hook on the back or a rollback. Like, that's what I'm thinking like duty. So that's what I, that's light duty to me. Regardless of that, we will, we'll work this out.
In this, in this ordinance, it says fifty ton.
No, I, I know exactly what you're talking about.
I say, then touch base back with the, the backup tower, as he stated. You know, you're on three sixty-five, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. That would be two drivers that would have to be on backup, on payroll, twenty-four hours a day, seven days. So technically, you're looking at four to six drivers that we would have to have to be a backup with no guarantee of any cause.
Understood.
What, what, let me ask you this question. What about if you had the-
Right.
What if you had the full, what if you were the primary tower? Would you have enough employees?
Do I have enough employees? Yes. Does John have enough employees? Yes.
You're saying, but, but to try to keep those guys as backup, only backup would be difficult.
You'd have to, right, you'd have to keep them on. You're twenty-four seven, we got a fifteen minute response time. We got to an accident scene. Those guys literally need to be in their trucks, ready to go.
Well, I think all of our businesses are tied for, to do what we do.
Exactly. So the, the three of us that are standing here tonight, I can, I can say, I've been in front of the board once with an issue I had last year. And I've never had another problem. I don't know if John has. So you've been called up here before?
I have.
How many times?
Once.
Once.
Maybe twice.
So, we're not, maybe twice. We're not, we're not the problem. Um, there is a couple guys out there that are. I'm not gonna name names. I'm not gonna put anybody out there. But again, same thing John said. We have in place, uh, a policy to discipline these towing companies. Let's discipline them.
The suspension is small though, I think, right? Like you, you do like your ten days and come back.
You can take it, well-
I, I've seen, I've, I've been here since we've suspended people. It's like, it's like twenty days or something.
Suspension.
Oh, we one hundred percent stop all of them.
I've been doing it now for, um, I've been on my own for five years. I was operations manager for Superior for five years. So I've been in this for fifteen years and nobody's been suspended. They've been fined.
We have, we have done suspensions. We have done fines. Uh, the ordinance provides for a second offense within six months. For up to sixty days of a suspension and a, and a subsequent offense here for up to a hundred and twenty days of a suspension. But it also allows the board to deviate from those numbers and depending on the circumstances.
During those suspensions, who was the backup tower? Cause the three of us weren't.
It just went to the next person on the list. They just were removed from the, the roster.
Never hit me. I never did tow for any other company during rotation.
You wouldn't have towed for any other company. They just would've gone off the list.
Right, and we would've been the following, one of the three of us would've been following. So if you look at our rotation, we've never done it.
And it, it has happened. It hasn't, I don't know how frequently, but we have, we have suspended people.
But then you're gonna get into the other thing. If one tower, you're saying the yard, it's gotta go back to Falls. I mean, how many accidents are there? Let's just say you get one accident, two. In a month, you're gonna have sixty cars at that one place.
We had one tower, one year in Falls Township for Superior Motor Service. I ran the entire show for that entire year. If it wasn't for the fact that we had a five acre property. You wouldn't have been able to keep all those vehicles in there. Cause any one of these cars that doesn't have insurance and the, uh, customers are not coming back to them. Have to sit in my lard for thirty to sixty days before I can apply for a salvage in order to move it. So I mean, you got sixty days worth of storage of every accident you guys have in the township.
That's the other thing that's also on the ordinance. You have to be a salver. I have a salver's license. I don't know if Rick does.
I'm working on it, but I don't, I, I have two people that I use. You gotta stay salver, you gotta stay salver as well.
I mean, like, to Rick's points, I mean, it's on, it's like regarding our new orders, you know, it's like kind of uncomfortable. If you think about some of them situations where, you know, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I'm-
We get a blizzard. And I know last year, um, la- last year we had that heavy storm, right at rush hour, ice and stuff. We had, I must've had, I don't know, a hundred calls from radio room with cars slid off the road. None of us are handling a hundred calls. None of us are. So I'm calling this guy, he's calling that guy, and we're all trying to get out there to do the same thing. We all wanna be on the same page. There's a certain group of the towers that wanna do this. This is our business. This is our livelihood. We're here to take care of the township. Like you said, none of us have, we've got a slap on the wrist here or there. Boo boo, we made a mistake. We wrote a wrong number down. We added, and added a twenty dollar fee to a fee we shouldn't have added. But for the most part, I don't think any of us have been unfair. And I don't think any of us have been, and, you know, we, we should've had this letter months ago to discuss this further. So we could've made our points valid. We could've sat down and asked you, um, do we know how many accidents are towed last year?
Rick, there's no doubt in my mind that we're unprepared for the meeting. I get your point.
Yeah, this, this definitely shouldn't be taken care of tonight. I would-
No, he's right. We're unprepared to ask him questions. They don't have answers.
It was advertised. Well, I don't feed it. I got my letter today. I got, I got the actual former. It's not standing in this room. And this, we're three of the seven, so.
There's no requirement that it was mailed to, that it needed to be mailed to any of the towers. It was done as a courtesy.
Yeah, we, well, I mean, we just wanted a, a little heads up.
I'm saying, Rick's asking questions and I, like, I could see the same thing. Like, just how many suspensions or how many, I'm just saying, like, seems like we were unprepared to answer some of the questions.
Respectfully, I don't think we're unprepared. I think there's been a, there's been a lengthy discussion about changing this. There are other municipalities that will use one tower. The ordinance was adopted, the, there's an-
I'm sorry.
There's an ordinance, the model ordinance that you have in front of you was taken from another municipality that we represent. It was shared with staff. It was shared with members of the police department. Um, there were some changes made. And this was the ordinance that we agreed upon, that we were comfortable with advertising. And it was advertised consistent, uh, with the advertising requirements. And it's, it's ready for adoption this evening.
Can I ask you which township that would've been?
That'd be Plymouth Township in Montgomery County.
How many accidents has Plymouth Township had?
I don't know, sir. And these gotcha questions about how many questions-
We can go, I understand.
To nowhere and, and, and one tow truck in one company is fine.
And I think Abington Township also uses one tow. Abington Township, which is a township of fifty-six thousand people, Abington Township. Plymouth, which is, you know where Plymouth is located. You know the, the roads that run through Plymouth. It's a very active municipality.
I'd like to see those numbers, to see, I mean-
It's irrelevant, the numbers, really.
This is our livelihood. This is our business. We're fighting for our business.
I know, but it's not our business. I understand that. Can we take a brief executive session?
Certainly can.
Lieutenant Ward and Chief Whitney, can you join us?
All right. Item number fourteen still. Is there any more public comment needed? Are we good? All right, so...
Mr. Dent, may I report on the executive session?
Yeah, please do.
The board just held an executive session to consult with Chief Whitney and Lieutenant Ward, and to also to discuss a matter of potential litigation.
All right. So we had a conversation back there with the Chief of Police, the Lieutenant. Lieutenant Ward spends way too much time dealing with this. He knows way too much about every bill and everything else. Unfortunately, you know, we can't cap the number of towers. And this is something that's been going on for as long as I've been here. So we're staying the course. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance chapter two oh six records? Ordinance twenty twenty one thirteen?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, another question. Can we be clear?
I'm gonna make the, propose the amendment, is that what you're asking?
Yeah. Can we say that?
Yeah, I'm gonna wait for those emotions in a second, and then, because we have to have that on the...
I'm sorry.
Is there a second? Motion made in second. All in favor?
No, no, no. We're going to amend paragraph R to say it'll now read, "The contractor shall have one twenty-ton wrecker with a chassis gross vehicle weight of nineteen thousand five hundred pounds." It originally said thirty-three thousand pounds. That is not a substantial amendment that requires re-advertising, so the board can vote on this this evening.
And we did, right?
And the rest of that paragraph is, is being removed. And again, that's not a substantial enough amendment.
Lieutenant Ward, can you do me a favor? Can you get with the towers and find out exactly what size truck we're talking about? Because we're all on the same page of what we need. We just don't know the exact wording. Is that good, Mr. Clark? Mr. Clark?
One second, Mr. Dent. Okay. If you are... You're adopting this ordinance right now. If the vote is in favor of it. You can't, you can amend the RFP, but then we would subsequently have, have to amend the ordinance to be consistent.
Okay.
So based on what you want to do, I would suggest that section R be changed to state that "The contractor shall have equipment as determined by the township as necessary to carry out the duties of this ordinance." Then the RFP will be amended accordingly to listing the exact type of equipment that we want them to have.
Okay.
Do you feel we're not prepared for this? Anybody? Come on, please.
It's a little bit of language that doesn't make sense. Yeah, we are, I agree.
These don't even have it written, but, come on. You guys are Falls Township supervisors.
He doesn't, he thinks we should have had the language in there correctly the first time.
I think a lot should have been done.
All right.
I mean, seriously.
Yeah, I heard you. We listened to you. We went back there, we discussed with Lieutenant Ward. And like I said, we can't cap the number of towers, so we can't sert out the bad seeds.
Yes, you can.
No, we can't. Listen, we're not moving, we're moving forward with this or we're not? A motion has been made in seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. Item number fifteen. Consider authorization to advertise the RFP for towing services. Now, the language in this, Mr. Clark.
The RFP can be adjusted before it goes out after conversations with Lieutenant Ward.
As easy as that?
Easy as that.
Okay. Any questions from board members?
No.
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 None. Any public comment on this? You gotta come to the mic.
Only one person, so it's over and done?
You have to come to the microphone.
Well, I just wanna, no, so it's vote and all?
Correct. The ordinance is...
I think you guys don't do that. Doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Item number fifteen...
Let me just say, the RFP is, we're talking about a full, full-time tower for light duty, full-time tower for heavy duty, backup for light duty, and a backup for heavy duty.
Correct, but the board in its discretion...
So it doesn't mean there's gonna be one tower.
Correct.
You only have one tower that can handle that ordinance. That figure not...
I thought we just fixed that.
We did just fix that.
It was the wrong truck you guys put down.
It's an easy fix. He changed the language.
I knew when you made it a lighter truck with a bigger...
No, I made it, I made it a truck as will determine is necessary to carry out the duties of the ordinance.
Basically just gave one person the job.
No, and that's, that's what you're trying to state.
I know you're trying to state it, but we didn't.
It's what you're trying to say, but that's not what's occurring at all. No, we just changed that language and the, and, and...
But we took... Has what?
We took that out.
We took that out! But how clear can we have to be? We took that language out.
We took that out.
The ordinance we adopted doesn't say that.
No, we took that whole section out.
Yes, we did.
No, you don't. We do.
All right. Item number fifteen. Any public comment needed on the RFP? Any questions from board members, son? Everybody's good? No public comment? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
All right. Item sixteen. Consider proposal from General Code for Codification Services for the Township Online Code. Mr. Tequita.
The board is being asked to consider approving a proposal from General Code for updates to the, our current codification. This would include updating legislation of a general and permanent nature. Process would ensure that legislation is up to date and is in line with Pennsylvania statutes and the current needs of our constituents. In addition, to making the overall code consistent in organization format, style, and content. It will also provide access to the code and make it easier for the public and staff to find information by implementing a full searchable online version of its code under the Ecode three sixty platform.
And this is what you use already?
Yes. What they're going to do is they are going to go back to the nineteen seventy-seven codification and work its way, work, work its way back through in conjunction with our attorneys to make sure that everything is consistent, so there's no, and consistent both with our own codes as well as Pennsylvania statutes.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Tequita from board members?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
No questions.
Mr. Galloway?
No question.
All right, and the codification project price is fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Mr. Galloway, can you please poll the board?
I'm Mr. Brasky.
Yes.
I'm Mr. Mallon.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
And I am yes.
All right, thank you. Item seventeen. Consider adopting ordinance repealing chapter twenty-one Community and Economic Development Commission. Earlier this year, we did away with the CEDC and, you know, at some point, we're gonna revisit this project. Mr. Tequita?
Correct. Instead of it being a Economic Development Commission, we want to create an Economic Development Corporation.
Right. And that'll give us a little bit more, you know, power in the township to help these businesses. Any questions from board members?
No.
No.
No, I'm excited about this.
Any public comment needed? None, I see no hands. All right, is there a motion to ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fourteen?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor? Aye. All right. Item eighteen. Consider a resu, consideration of resolution agreement between Falls Township and Lower Mayfield Township regarding Elbow Lane and Walnut Lane. Elbow Lane off of Stony Hill Road is a split road. Half of the road is Falls and half of the road is Lower Mayfield. The Falls Township is, is part of the Falls Township Road Program this year. This basically is going to allow Lower Mayfield to reimburse us for the fees to pave the road. Correct, Mr. Clark?
That's correct.
And is it a timely manner of correct? It's just a year?
Correct.
All right. Any questions from board members? Mr. Brasky?
No, I have nothing. I'm glad to see it's moving forward.
Mr. Mallon?
No question.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions, couple comments. We met with many at work sessions, our professionals with the, the neighborhood groups there. Everybody is happy about this, this proposal, and it's doing the right thing, so I'm in favor.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Any public comment needed? See no hands. Is there a motion? Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-five.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, motion made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Item nineteen. Consider escrow releases.
Board is being asked to consider four escrow releases tonight. First is for Air Gas USA at fifty-one Middle Drive for one million six hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. This is escrow release number one. LTL Color Compounders at twenty Progress Drive for fifty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty cents. This is escrow release number three. Morrisville Commons LP at five fifty West Trenton Avenue for two hundred and fifty-four thou, two hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. This is escrow release number fifteen. And Metals USA at fifty Cabot Boulevard East for one thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and fourteen cents. Based on Jones Engineering Associates, the work has been completed to their satisfaction and the amount is recommended for release.
All right, this isn't township money we're actually spending. This is money that's held in escrow while these projects are in development. Any questions or comments from anyone?
No.
No.
No questions.
Any public comment needed?
Do we have?
None. All right, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Can you poll the board, Mr. Galloway?
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Mallon?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
And I am yes. Thank you.
All right. Item twenty is the minutes from September twentieth. Any questions or comments or corrections? Only two if you were here. Oh, three.
I'm sorry.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, motion made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain because I wasn't at the meeting.
I abstain.
All right. Item twenty-one, Engineers Report. Mr. Jones still with us?
Mr. Chairman, yes. These are, we're September, since then we had three new land developments submitted, one residential earth disturbance application. Three land developments, two of them were on tonight. It was the minor subdivision for North Point and the BJ's Warehouse Sketch Plan. The other one is, is the North Point Minor Subdivision that will be before the Planning Commission next week, and that's for, for calling that the Port Strip. It's a, it's a, a land parcel that they're separating to create a buildable lot along South Port Road. The earth, the residential earth disturbances for a full filling. In terms of the updates that are identified in red, I highlight a couple. MB Metals is nearing completion. Both buildings are under a TCO, waiting for grants to be established. The Bum Holdings Project, the Lincoln Storage Project, the North Point Phase One Building Three Project, and Raising Cains are all nearing construction. All through the development agreements and bylaw process. So we anticipate next report hopefully indicates that they're all underway. The Grand Party Affairs Project will be before this board next month. And I spoke by the other two. In terms of the residential earth disturbances, the only updates are that the three are in red have been reviewed and approved. They haven't started yet. In terms of the township projects, the Quaker Penn Park, Mr. Andrews, the Public Parks and Recs Director, is handling the removal of the docks at the Quaker Penn Park. I believe it's already done. If not, it's gonna be done very soon. He indicated to me it would be mid, so they will be stacked on site as usual and set up for repairs over the winter. The twenty twenty road program, I'm happy to report, is substantially complete. We're happy with the outcome. We are working a couple of complaints from the residents, but we feel we have them under control. That will be under punch list and maintenance before the end of the year. Twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three road program, Elderberry Drive, is well underway with storm sewer improvements. So that's on schedule, and Pinewood Drive portion that'll be constructed next year, we anticipate asking for advertising rights in December or January. So that project will be under construction early spring two thousand and twenty-two. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from Mr. Jones, Mr. Brasky?
No, thank you.
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Mr. Galloway?
No question.
I'm sorry, I might have made it off. I'm not used to pushing a button, and I have no questions. Is there a motion to accept the Engineers Report as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, take us to the bill list, item twenty-two. Two million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars. About one point two five little over his payroll. It's about a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars paid insurance premiums for the three... It's about $100, $200,000 paid insurance premiums for the three fire companies, $150,000 in new trucks that we bought for the Public Works Department that was budgeted for workers' comp payment of $100,000. Any comments from board members?
No thanks.
Mr. Palmer?
No comment.
Mr. Galloway?
No, no comment.
Any public comment needed? All right, is there a motion to accept, approve the bill list?
Submove.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Can you pull the board, Mr. Galloway?
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Ms. Mullen?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
All right. I think we already commented on our executive session. That takes us to Police Department Report. Chief Whitney, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. You have my written report. I'll just kind of recap the highlights. In September, we had 1,725 calls for service, which brings us up to 15,214 for the year at the end of September. We had 97 crashes, which brings us to 830 for the year at that point. We had six overdoses, which brings us to 62 for the year. The highlights, as far as other additional calls for service, are relatively brief this month. They're all pursuits. People are still driving crazy and running from the police out there. On October 15th, we had a pursuit from Oxford Valley Road onto US Route Number 1. It was terminated by the police department. The dash cam footage allowed us to identify the operator who's facing charges for that. On September 25th, we had a pursuit from Route 13 onto Route 1 northbound, which was BMW, was terminated by the police. And on September 24th, the night before, we had a pursuit on Route 13, which led to the arrest of the driver. Often you'll see that we terminate these pursuits just because the driving behavior of the individual just becomes too risky, and, you know, we don't continue the pursuit. We try to track them down through investigations. There's a reference in there to the Mental Health Co-Responder Program, which we're going to be starting in a few months, which is a grant that was pursued by the county for us in Middletown to bring onboard two county employees, which will have a workspace in our headquarters in Middletown's, and they'll respond and follow up on calls for service that involve some kind of mental health component. I think that's a really good program. We're very excited to have that onboard. Ben Salem has been doing it for about a year, and now Middletown and Falls will join that program. I have no reason to believe it will be as successful as it's been in Ben Salem, so that's a great program for us to bring onboard. And then there's some slides at the end of your report that cover some traffic incident management training. We trained the entire department when the pandemic hit and things were quiet, bringing us up to standard with the national push to train all first responders in traffic incident management. We also, in so doing, changed some of the things that we have to keep pace with current technology and studies involving what's safest for first responders on a roadway and the public. We added a linear aspect to our graphics package, which when you're taking a blocking position, kind of tells traffic which way to go. Studies indicate that people get confused trying to read the side of the car, but if you put a line on it, they know to follow the line, so we added that in. We also added in technology that slows the flash pattern, the rate of the lights when our emergency vehicles are in park, because it's less distracting to the public that's driving by. There's a sensor that actually lowers the output of the lights, so they're not quite as bright at nighttime, which can be distracting the drivers, and sometimes blinding where they can't see the first responders, you know, outside the vehicle. There is a, a low-frequency addition to the siren, that if you're trying to go through an intersection, you can hit a button and all the forward-facing lights in the car turn white, and this low-frequency rumble comes out like somebody with a loud stereo to try to get the attention of the public to, to move over. And there's a blueprint, a Bluetooth component to this, where if there are numerous vehicles on a, on an incident, the flash patterns sync up, all, you know, less distracting to drivers that go by, so.
That's great.
You know, we try to keep everybody as safe as we can. We had two struck-by incidents in 2019. We had two cars wrecked, but, you know, nobody hurt, so you're never really safe when you're out, when you're out in a roadway, so we're doing everything we can to keep our officers and the public safe.
All right. Thank you.
That's all I have for this.
Any other, any questions for Chief Whitney?
No.
No questions.
Palmer?
No, thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
Just an interesting report, chief. Thank you.
Yeah, some interesting technology, especially the Bluetooth, so they all sync up.
Yeah, you know, we try to, everybody's trying to keep people more safe on the roadway, so anything that we can do to, to protect our officers and the public, we'll do.
All right. Thank you very much. That takes us to manager comment, item 25.
Just a few items for tonight. The 2021 Falls Township Leaf Collection Schedule for Waste Management, for Waste Management is Saturday, October 23rd, Saturday, November 6th, and Saturday, November 20th. If you experience any issues with your leaf collection, please contact Waste Management at 1-800-869-5566. This information will be posted on our website and on social media. On Saturday, October 23rd, Falls Township Police will hold its Great Shredder Event in the front parking lot by the police department from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This is a free event. Shred your old documents, six bags or boxes per person. This is open to Falls Township residents only, no businesses. And Bucks County Medication Disposal Program, drive up and drop in is Saturday, October 23rd from 10:00 to 2:00, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. For more information and locations, visit www.bcdac.org or www.dea.gov. That's all.
Thank you. Any questions for-
No, thank you.
Mr. Tequita?
No good? Nope.
Takes us to board comment, and Ms. Mullen, would you like to go first?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to my fellow board members for your vote of confidence in me. Also, thank you to the residents. While I know appointments are different than elections, I just want to be clear that I'll do, give my very best effort to fulfill the duties as if you picked me. I want to thank my husband and my family for supporting me while I take on another time-consuming commitment, and despite being threatened, I do want to thank Jeff Rocco, say that he did leave some big shoes to fill, and I very much look forward to working with all of you and all of you up here.
Thank you. Mr. Galloway?
No, just welcome aboard to our newest supervisor, and everybody have a good night.
Mr. Palmer? I mean, yeah, Mr. Palmer?
Same, welcome, welcome aboard, and, um, go ahead.
Mr. Brasky?
Yeah, just to, obviously mimic everybody else, but look forward to working with you. Congratulations on the appointment. I'd like to give the rest of my time to Commissioner Harvey, if you would like it.
Hadn't, hadn't really anticipated it. Thank you, appreciate that. First off, welcome Supervisor Mullen. I think you're a great choice. I'm glad to see you up there. You have to give your fellow supervisors a hard time, because they were supposed to tell you that you're supposed to wear pink in October, so they clearly didn't do that. Oh, you, okay. All right, all right. I thought they left you out, sort of hazing or something, but, um-
I might take my time back.
Yeah.
Can you sit down, please?
Yeah. So thank you very much for, I got here a little late. I wanted, I was at Marsville seeing their, their borough meeting and trying to get around all 54 municipalities at some point to give updates on county issues. I'm glad the chief mentioned the co-responders program. That's a program that Commissioner Marceglio has been trying to implement in Bucks County for probably a decade. It's funny how things start moving once you get into the majorities, and, you know, good things start happening. And so it is a, it is a project that's in Ben Salem right now and has been for about a year. As Chief Whitney said, they have seen a dramatic impact on the number of calls that police officers have to go out on, because the, these co-responders are social workers who are trained on how to work with families, work with people who are having, not just mental health issues, but substance abuse issues, and as I'm sure the chief will tell you, or any police officer in any municipality will tell you, a lot of the calls you get are usually connected to one of those two things, some kind of substance abuse or mental health, and it tends to be a lot of the same calls, you know, they know what houses they're going to. And a lot of occasions, they know the situations. So, and these co-responders work with the school district, so that they are getting really like a holistic approach to this issue, so they get to know where the problems are, who, where the people who are having some challenges, and they can shoulder a lot of that, which frees up police officers to do police work and not have to also be social workers. So we're very appreciative of Falls and Middletown agreeing to take this on, and I will let you know, there's a lot of other municipalities who are like chomping at the bit, you know, but it's all funding. We get grants which allow us to do it, and then you guys agree to sort of like shoulder some of that when that grant runs out in two years, so I think it's gonna be fantastic program.